Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Public Hearing on the Proposed Charter Change Committee Reports. To begin, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, to begin tonight's hearing, we'll just do a brief introduction of the subject. First off, it is a public hearing to take comment on a proposed change to the method of election to the Greenwich Board of Education. As you are aware, the Board appointed a committee to thoroughly research the issue, and that committee comprised of five members issued their reports. There are two copies on the table as you sign in, if you would like to sign in to speak. There was a majority report, and then there was a minority comment report. There are copies of them there. They're on the town website. Under the committees appointed by the Board of Selectmen, you can download not only the reports but all of the minutes from the some 17 meetings that they held over the course of their charge. I believe several of the members are with us tonight. I don't know if all of them can be, but I'd like to just acknowledge them once again: Brian Paldoones, Peter Von Braun, I don't see Barry Rickert, is Barry?
Bill Finger.
Okay. And Bill Finger. So, three out of the five members who participated are with us. Unfortunately, Ms. Caldwell could not be with us. She is under the weather and unable to attend, but she's with us in spirit, and I do want to acknowledge her again publicly for her contribution as the Chairwoman of the committee, along with the four other individuals who served and gave of their time so freely. So, there's a signing sheet on the table. To my right, we have two sheets up with us. Through the good advice of our RTM members, we have organized it so we have a balanced view and hearing from people, both pro and con. So, Mr. Marzullo will call your name to speak. Mr. Marzullo is also going to be our timer this evening. Generally, we try to limit comments to about three minutes. I tend to be very liberal with time, but we do want to hear from everyone, so we would respectfully try to adhere to that and not go exceedingly over. With us also tonight, important to acknowledge, because any type of initiative like this requires legal expertise, we have with us our town attorney, Wayne Fox, and two of our assistant town attorneys, Valerie Mays Keeney and Jean McLaughlin. Jean has had a lot of experience, particularly in Greenwich, on this subject during his, how many years? Thirty years, almost?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years with the town of Greenwich. So, much of the changes that have occurred to the town's charter over the course of that period of time, Jean has played an integral role in. And Jean was the person who briefed this board back in 2015, when this subject first came to us by request on the part of several RTM members. At that time, we were advised of the methods in which you can pursue to undertake charter change, and while no initiative went forward at the time, the decision was to provide for a more orderly review, and that's what led to the more recent establishment of the committee. That, again, people served, and I'm getting thankful. So, without further ado, I would ask also, you know, we just last week at our board meeting discussed this, you know, with the world in which we live, a lot of volatility, a lot of emotion in public discourse, but I think we in Greenwich know better than most that this is a community that prides itself on civility and respect and tolerance. This board, in fact, issued a statement last week on some of the insidious acts that occurred, both nationally and regionally regarding religious intolerance and the whole attitudes and lack of respect for people. Fortunately, and I say fortunately, we have not had that experience in Greenwich and hope we don't, but I think it all set by example, and I'd like to believe that Greenwich will set the example from the local up on how we expect and how we desire to see our discourse take place. And I know that's been the tradition, and I hope we can certainly continue that tonight with respect for various points of view. We'd ask that you please silence your phones or put them on vibrate in that we request that you do not make any comments or applause after people speak and accord them the same respect that you would wish to be accorded if you were speaking. Okay, so, that being said, Mr. Marzullo.
Karen Fassley Otis, followed by Jerry Pollak.
My name is Karen Fassley Otis, and I am speaking as an individual tonight. The town charter change proposed by the Charter Change Committee is an important step to finally have a mechanism that will allow for accountability and voter choice in choosing the individuals who will guide the public education of our most precious resource, our town's children. It's a change that deserves the support of the Board of Selectmen. Let's face it, the current makeup of the BOE under the guise of a balanced board with half Republicans and half Democrats has not worked for years. Under the current structure, our town has seen five superintendents, if you count the interims, and with this year's hiring, that number will now be six. Students and teachers have seen a countless number of curriculum changes that can make your head spin. Some students excel while others are left behind, and what can we, as voters, do about it? Essentially, nothing. Since we don't choose who's on the BOE, it is the two political parties, the Republicans and Democrats, that choose for us. So, what is the argument? The opponents of this change claim that the change will politicize the BOE and cause an upheaval in the working relationship of board members by causing an unbalanced board, but even those opposed admit that under the proposed charter change, a majority could win three seats in one year and could win two seats in another year. The operative word here is "could." Contrary to what has been implied, the proposed changes does not guarantee that one party will control the Board of Ed over another party. Rather, this proposal makes it possible that one party could seat a majority, but it is equally possible that a four-four makeup of the board will occur. The sense of fear being perpetuated by those who also fear this change through the guise of politicizing is exactly the opposite of what will occur. For the first time in our town's history, this proposed change will promote competition and will allow the voters to choose who they wish to serve on the BOE. It will also allow voters, for the first time, to hold BOE members accountable. Those who do not perform up to voter expectations can be voted out, something we can't do in our current system. On the theme of this change having a political motive, I've heard tonight, or I've heard throughout the course of this, by opponents to this change, that parents want a BOE that doesn't play politics, but politics is exactly what will not occur in a competitive and fair election. In contrast, our current system promotes the same old politics. Members are appointed, and competition for seats on the board are rare. Under our current system, we might as well have the Board of Ed be an appointed board. In contrast, the proposed change promotes a competitive and fair election, which also allows for voter choice, again, something we don't have currently. If that is political, I'm all for it. So, in summary, this change is a change that Greenwich needs. I urge you to support the change. Our town's children's future education depends on it. Thank you.
Next. That's Jerry Pollak, followed by Linda Mosher.
Mr. Tessie, Mr. Marzullo, Mr. Toner, education policy should not be a matter of partisan politics. This principle is so widely supported that even in our highly politicized country, 85% of all Boards of Education in the United States and all New York, England states, except Connecticut, conduct nonpartisan Board of Education elections. Connecticut is the exception because such exceptions are not permitted by state statute. What we have instead, election for a balanced board, is the next best option. As things stand, at least five members of our eight-member board must agree on a proposal, and this encourages cooperation and nonpartisanship. If the proposed charter takes place, all five votes could be provided by the board members of one party, and this would be members of the town's plurality party, the Republican Party. No longer would consultation and cooperation with members of the Democratic Party be needed. Indeed, considering that each party's members now caucus separately before each public meeting, a public meeting might be superfluous. The five Republican members might well have decided all issues. Has the system worked so badly as to require change? Hardly. There have scarcely been any party-line deadlocks. Of approximately 350 motions in the past five years, only four were deadlocked along party lines, three of them on electing a chair. Well, if the system isn't broken, why is anyone trying to change it? Allegedly, there isn't enough voter choice and candidate competition. What's the merit of this allegation? Although only two candidates from each party can be elected in an election, nothing prevents the DTC or RTC from placing more than two candidates on the ticket. Indeed, in the last election, both nominated three candidates, and they could have nominated more. Further, nothing prevents someone who wants to serve from seeking a place on the ballot. As a Democrat or a Republican, all they need is the requisite number of signatures on their petition. Any unaffiliated resident likewise can seek the petition route to get on the ballot. The truth is that there's no limit on the number of candidates who can get on the ballot. If the parties want to nominate more candidates than can be elected, nothing keeps them from it. The more basic problem may be to find qualified people who want to compete and serve. There's no salary to be earned. The service requires a great deal of time and application, and to compete for the job entails not only work and time, but also expenses.
Jerry, you have five more seconds.
To conclude, the existing system isn't broken and doesn't need to be fixed. The proposed change would not advance us. It would increase partisanship and politicize the board. Thank you.
Linda Mosher, followed by Sandy Waters.
My presentation is nothing compared to what Karen said, so I defer what I was going to say.
Fred DiCaro, you're next.
What did she say?
Sandy Waters, and then Fred DiCaro.
But Linda, you were asked, essentially, you're affirming what Karen Fassley Otis said, just for the minute, so we, thank you.
Hi. As you know, I'm, my name is Sandy Waters, and from '97 to 2005, I served as a Republican member of the Board of Education, and the last three years as Board Chairman. Any decision about school governance should consider first what best serves the interests of children. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAEB, agrees, and it supports nonpartisan boards of education. CAEB writes, quote, "The focus of members of the Boards of Education must be improving educational qualities for all children. The current process of nominating candidates by the local political parties' town committees discourages good school board candidates interested in board service but unwilling to participate in town political parties. Partisan-based Boards of Education may make decisions along party lines that foster the agenda of the political party. Nonpartisan Boards of Education allow candidates to run on their own merits, experience, and platforms without allegiance to a political party. Any individual would be able to run for the Board of Education by submitting a petition to be on the ballot. The other New England states all conduct nonpartisan Boards of Education, as do 85% of all Boards of Education in the country, as you just heard," unquote. Nonpartisan Boards of Education alone promote competition, choice, voter engagement, and accountability, the four stated goals of this committee, and they offer equal footing for the unaffiliated voter, which represents 39% of our population, to be heard and serve. Unfortunately, our state legislature has not approved statutory language that allows a municipality to authorize the nomination of nonpartisan candidates to a local Board of Education. So, Connecticut has state-mandated partisanship in which political parties nominate candidates for the Board of Ed. For obstructing nonpartisan school decision-making, I hold Democrats, who control the legislature, responsible. For more than 50 years, we in Greenwich have supported the next best thing to nonpartisanship, bipartisanship, and when parties are equally represented and the chairman has no tie-breaking vote, board members collaborate because five votes are needed to act. As proposed, unbalanced representation smothers bipartisanship. Washington-style, polarized political decision-making in the Greenwich schools seems closer, and when the adults argue, kids suffer. Nonetheless, this recommendation has supporters, including the Greenwich Republican Town Committee. Why? This proposal will give Republicans 100% control of Board of Ed decision-making when they represent only 35% of the population. So, I am equally critical of both political parties, which are more self-interested than civic-minded. Their voices must not be allowed to drown out the majority of our population, including some Democrats and Republicans, and many of our growing number of unaffiliated voters who are more moderate. I urge you to embrace nonpartisan Board of Ed decision-making and help us get it done in Hartford, and until it happens, do not unbalance our Board of Ed along the lines proposed to you here tonight. Thanks.
Fred DiCaro. But you have marked "half-pro," so we're going to put you on.
Yes, there was no one for...
Followed by Lucy Krasner.
Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Fred DiCaro. I am one of two registrars of voters for the town of Greenwich. I am the, I am the Republican registrar of the two of us. We both, of course, take an oath, once we get into office, to count the votes fairly and equally. I've been doing it now for eight years. It is unbelievable to me that every odd year, when my partner and I count the votes for this race, it is the only race out of 20 contests across town where the people with the most votes may not, in fact, be declared the winners of the race. I don't know how the current method could be considered to honor voter choice when the candidate with the most votes won't get seated in certain instances. Now, the committee did get right in trying to rectify this as much as Connecticut's quota system allows, but I would encourage the selectmen to look more closely at the Glastonbury model because the committee strayed from it in one very important matter. The committee's recommendation allows voters to select from a number of candidates who cannot possibly win, even if they are in the clear majority. It allows the party to nominate and the voters to vote for five people of the same party, even when the law says only three of those can win. Why would we continue to frustrate the voters like that? The will of the voters? And further, since when is it American to limit somebody's ability to win based on who they associate with? We don't limit the number of winners based on race or gender, but we limit them based on their stated and advertised philosophy? I'll add two pieces of information as a practical matter. The quota language which must be placed on the ballot, I brought a sample, if you have not seen it, when you use this method is a regular source of calls and frustration for voters to our office biennially as soon as the sample ballots are published. I know both my office and the town clerk have asked the Secretary of the State if the required language can be adjusted, and their response has always come back, "No, when you choose this section, that's how it is in statute." Secondly, I watch as absentee ballots are fed into the tabulator. Some people do vote the party line, and when they do, they vote for all the candidates. So, as a result, they have nullified their choice, as there's no way to discern which candidate they wanted. I have 30 seconds? It was upside down. I have counted about 100 races in my eight years. I've counted races where my party's candidates have won and where they have lost. I've taken an oath that makes that immaterial when I'm counting the votes, but what brought me here today is to urge any change which allows the people's vote to count and eliminates any quotas and restrictions related to that, regardless of the idea or party.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you. Lucy Krasner, followed by Paul Olmsted.
For those coming in, you can sign in if you'd like to speak. There's a sheet, those in support of moving forward change, those who are not. Also, there are still some seats up front for people who are standing in the back. Please feel free to avail yourself to those open seats.
I have risen to urge you to vote against charter change at this time. I think that, as a matter of fact, from the very start, this committee that was formed was an unfair committee. You had one of the members on the committee who was the proponent for this change. It was not a neutral fact-finding committee, and you had two people on this committee who had lost as Republican candidates for the Board of Education. Then there was Joan Caldwell and one Democrat. I don't think that's a fair fact-finding committee. They started out with discussing the merits of having unaffiliated voters have a larger input to the Board of Education. The actual report does not in any way provide for unaffiliated voters to have a greater input to the Board of Education. In fact, unaffiliated voters have always had an opportunity to be on the candidate, as petition candidates, with only the need for 108 vote, petition signatories to get on the ballot. What this proposal does, when we just heard about give people the choice of voting in one vote, one choice, you're giving control to 37% of the town, that's Republican, I may be off 36% or whatever, are Republican, registered. That is a real power grab to give 37% control. It's not a majority, it's not a mandate. What would really increase choice to the voters is if the Republican Town Committee lowered the number of required signatures for petition candidates, which are now 658. If you don't get on the Republican choice of their possibility of four candidates, you, on a Republican, you would have to get 658 petition signatures to be on the ballot. So, that is really unfair and not giving voter choice easily. As a Republican, as a Democrat, you only need about 98, and as I said, for a petition candidate, 108. So, that's critical for this whole issue of choice. As for accountability, I would go back to the fact that things are not broken. We see this issue which has already been raised, and I'll just mention it very briefly, the vote of 350 votes in the last five years, only four of which were deadlocked. I am very concerned about the fact, and this was in the commission's report, about the possibility of national educational policies should be part of Greenwich procedures, and I think bringing national Republican, in this case, educational policy to town would be a real mistake. I urge you to vote against this proposal.
It's Paul Olmsted, he's here. Next, Stephen Walco, followed by Jeff Raymer.
I'm sorry.
You're next, yeah, and then Stephen Walco, and then Jeff Raymer.
So, yes, my name is Paul Olmsted. I have three children in Greenwich Public Schools, one each in elementary, middle, and high school. I'm also a member of the representative town meeting from District 5. I'd like to commend the selectmen for establishing this committee to look at the Board of Education process. The current system, to me, is hard to justify. I'd also like to commend the committee members for their thoroughness of their effort. Between the end of August and the beginning of March, they held 17 public meetings. They heard from a wide variety of stakeholders and experts, and I think, and their efforts were guided by the input they received during their investigation, and indeed, the option they recommended by a four-to-one majority of the committee was not the one initially outlined in the committee's charge. Their 22-page report outlines a thorough examination of alternatives. In all, they considered 17 alternatives, six of which it concluded were not feasible. The current system is flawed. It's anti-democratic. Regardless of the wishes of voters, two Republicans and two Democrats will be elected. In the last two election-losing candidate received more votes than one or both of the candidates from the other party who were seated. It's hard to explain. Vote for four, but if more than two of your choices are from the same party, the votes won't count. Three, it effectively delegates the selection of board members to the political parties rather than to the voters. I've heard some people say, and we've heard tonight, that they prefer nonpartisan elections. The committee devoted significant effort to researching that option and concluded it was not allowed under Connecticut's state statute. Nonpartisan elections feature one significant characteristic with the proposal submitted by the committee: the candidates who win are the candidates who get the most votes, unlike the current practice. It's simply not credible to say that the current process is, that in the absence of nonpartisan election, that the BOE election system is preferable. Fundamental fairness says voter choice should drive the makeup of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Jeff Raymer, next.
We have two pro.
I know. I'm trying to even, all right, that's all right. Go ahead. Straighten that next. We're good.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. First Selectman. First, thank you for your time and attention in giving this important topic. I offer the following comments in an effort to help in your consideration as you delve into this report. In order to ensure greater voter choice and greater accountability, a change is needed on how the structure of the citizens of Greenwich elect members of the Board of Education. Simply, the current structure of Board of Ed elections neither encourages accountability nor choice. You know, they say you learn everything in kindergarten, and I submit to you that if that is the case, it is very difficult to teach one how we operate in Greenwich relative to the Board of Ed elections. Isn't it easier to simply say, "Those who get the most votes win"? Or, would you rather explain to your five-year-old or six-year-old, "Well, not really, not in Greenwich. It depends on what party you belong to." I subscribe to the fact that the number of votes should dictate who gets elected. First, the current system does not encourage an unaffiliated candidate to run for the Board of Ed. Instead, it dampens an opportunity for an unaffiliated candidate to be placed on the ballot. The current system allows for each party to nominate candidates from their respective group, contrary to the notions of democracy. This creates an illusion of a general election. We see it in our BET as well, but that's for another night. As we all know, each party under the current system is effectively entitled to two of the four open positions, irrespective of votes cast. The only import of voter involvement is if a party nominates more than two candidates from their own party, and therefore, you simply have the illusion of a general election when you're really talking about a primary. By way of background, over the past 20 elections, we understand that in less than half of the time, voters have not been afforded a choice by the political parties. In other words, voters of any kind, but in particular, the unaffiliated voters, have been disenfranchised. That's based on the system, not necessarily the parties. While no system is perfect, we believe we can do better. This proposal gets us there with a little asterisk. Alternatively, an election with actual choice serves to both encourage unaffiliated voters to run for the Board of Ed and encourages voter participation, wherein the candidate with the most number of votes will win the election. Simple and yet tried and true as we face elections in our democracy. Under the notion of accountability, it's clear that the current Board of Ed election process does not encourage accountability by individuals or groups. One only needs to look to the current non-election of the Board of Ed chairman as a prime example of why a change is needed. No one party is held accountable. The current system dampens any real attempt to hold any individual or group accountable for its actions. The citizens of Greenwich, and not any political party, should have the greatest say in who's elected. It's as simple as that. A system that allows majority-minority and even unaffiliated representation will result in the greatest benefit to the citizens of Greenwich. I don't see anybody challenging the way Hartford is run or the way Washington is run relative to its elections. We have a majority-minority there. The makeup of the state and the makeup of this town and the makeup of any organization is based on the number of votes needing to win. In this particular instance, I encourage you to adopt the recommendation. I will, however, with one caveat, agree with Fred DiCaro's point. I think to allow greater number of candidates per party leads to confusion and leads to a water-down process, and I would ask that you endorse it, subject to that And I would ask that you endorse it, subject to that one change. Thank you.
After Jeff, it'll be Elizabeth Paldunis, followed by John Blankley.
Good evening, and thank you for the hearing time. There's a purpose, of course, to having a balanced board, and the purpose of the balanced board is to try and take politics out of educational policy. This is plainly an initiative to create one-party control. The circular that went out from the Republican Town Committee used the expression, seeking to make it possible for five out of eight seats to be held by the majority party. I don't think there's anybody in the room who seriously believes that under a Glastonbury model, that we would be flip-flopping back and forth with the Republicans taking advantage at one election, and then two years later, the Democrats plainly will be following the path that we've been following for a long time, and that is that there is a higher poll of Republican-situated voters than Democratic voters. You would have five out of eight coming from one party. Even in Glastonbury, the model this is based upon, in Glastonbury, one party has dominated and held its majority five out of eight for election after election for a very long period of time. The question is, what's good for this town? What's good for our educational program? Is it better for our educational program that there no longer needs to be a bipartisanship in which you work with each other to find a fifth vote to do things? We've not deadlocked on votes. As was said before, in 350 motions over five years, we deadlocked on party lines on four. Three of them were the vote for chair, only one of which was on educational policy. Listen to the recommendations that are coming to you from the people who are coming out of the educational community and speaking to you tonight, because they'll be talking to you fervently about what's good for education. We have a long tradition in this town of a balanced board because we wanted politics out of education. Back from our first charter in 1939, we had a balanced board of six people on the board, three from each party, all of them coming up for election every two years. In 1966, we decided, we realized would be a better way to say it, that a staggered board is better. Let's bring just half the board up every two years and serve four-year terms. And we did that at that time. And there was a whopping vote on that of 142 to 12. And that was done at a point of time in which Democrats, the registered Democrats, were 55% of the registry, I'm sorry, Republicans were 55%, Democrats were only 17%, much more lopsided than the present 36% Republican, 27% Democrat. There was also an earlier attempt in 1996 to inaugurate an initiative to go to one-party control, and that was voted down at that point. It was actually a motion to postpone indefinitely, and the vote on that was 104 to 89 with two abstentions. Thank you. We need to take and keep politics out of education. Yes, okay, Democrats are only 27% of the electorate, but the Republicans are only 36%. There's not a majority in either case, not much basis to be looking for 60% control on the board in one party or the other. What we really need to do is recognize that we have, in this town, a high-functioning educational system. We need to pay attention to that and continue to maintain our interest in education, not in politics. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Paldunis, and I'm a Riverside resident. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm Mary DeBrian Paldunis, a member of the Board of Selectmen's BOE Charter Revision Committee. Thanks to the Board of Selectmen for forming this committee and to the committee members who gave their time over the past six months to do a deep dive into how Greenwich can improve the process of electing school board members. I'm here tonight to speak as an unaffiliated but registered and participating Greenwich voter. I take democracy seriously. I've run for public office myself, creating my own party and petitioning myself onto the ballot in my former community when I thought I could bring something to the table and give voters a choice on Election Day. I have also supported my husband in his bid for a seat on the Greenwich School Board in 2013. When I vote for school board candidates, I want to assemble a good team to work on behalf of our kids. I don't much care what label the candidate wears. I'm interested in the skill set he or she brings to the table and how that fills gaps or overlaps with expertise already on the board. I want to choose the persons, the best persons for the job. The current process of seating two Democrats and two Republicans each election doesn't allow me to elect the best four people if the best four happen to be members of one party. The committee's recommendations take a step toward creating more choice on Election Day among Democrats and Republicans. However, they do little to help unaffiliated voters like me, who might be excellent school board members. Yes, the hurdles to get on the ballot are low. Getting your name in front of 36,000 voters across the 61 square miles of town without party support is a challenge, but maybe possible. But having your name listed as a petition candidate underneath the Democrats and Republicans makes you look like an afterthought. How could you ever win? Could this be why unaffiliated candidates don't run for school board? The bold and most democratic solution is for the town of Greenwich to work to change Connecticut's statute requiring nonpartisan boards. According to a report by the National School Boards Association, in nearly 90% of elections nationwide, superintendents report that no party affiliation is listed on the election ballot for board candidates. Do the democratic thing. Lobby to change the state statute. Level the playing field so that any interested and qualified candidates for the Board of Ed in any Connecticut town may run on equal footing, and voters can choose the board members who will best serve our schools. Thank you.
After John, it'll be Don Wyko, followed by Ed Mendelson.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, Kathy. Last time I spoke here, Peter, it was to support the status quo. I have not changed my mind in the interim. For those who don't know me, I have run for office. In fact, six years ago, I tried to unseat Dear Leader. I did not succeed. I am here this evening. I am a Democrat, as most people know. I sit on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, but I am not here in either of those capacities. I'm here as a grandparent. I have three step-grandchildren in the school system, and I have two little ones who will be in the school system soon enough. And I want them to have the same educational opportunity and the same quality of education that my children had when they came through this system and partly the private system when they were younger. So I do believe that the proposed change will be deleterious to that effort. As to process, first of all, that was mentioned before. I was a little dumbfounded to see the makeup of your committee, but I would like to commend Bill Finger for his excellent Minority Report, which I urge everyone to read. As to the substance, well, let me tell you where I'm coming from. In the U.K., I was the beneficiary of something called the 1944 Education Act. At the end of the war, the great parties came together and they said, how can we make a better world? And the best thing they could think to do was to reform the education system. They made secondary education free and available for working-class kids, and that is how I got my start. You did, however, have to pass an exam age 11. Twenty years later, another political group came to power, and they decided that this was far too stressful for 11-year-olds, and they turned the system over. So the whole question of education became a political football. And I come from a place where having education as a political football is absolutely the wrong place to be, and it seems to me that that is where we could end up if we end up unbalancing the board. Let me just say something about the influence of political parties. This is a point which I don't think I've seen or heard anywhere else. People decry the way that the political parties choose candidates for the board. I think it's a good thing. I think that when people present themselves to our committee, at least as far as the Democrats are concerned, they have to run the gauntlet. We want to make sure that these are people who have a passion about education, have experience of education, and we want to make sure that they're going to be good board members. So we think that it is a good part of the process that we nominate people as a party. I do hope that the Republicans would do the same thing. And one final point. When it comes to two or three candidates, I did at one time advocate strongly for only having two candidates, because I didn't want Republicans choosing among our candidates. I have changed that view now. I think that we do offer choice, and we do offer people who have experience. So, status quo. To the barricades, for the status quo.
It's done. Followed by Ed Mendelson.
My name is Don Wyko. I'm a member of the 12th District, the RTM. I'm going to be very brief. First of all, I support this move. And, but in addition to supporting this Glastonbury model, I'd suggest that instead of eight members anyway, we should have nine, and the majority party have the controlling interest. That's my own comment. That's my own opinion. So again, I support the Glastonbury, but with a little caveat of maybe make instead of eight, nine members.
Next will be Peter Von Braun, followed by Michael Baumgarten.
Good evening. My name is Ed Mendelson. Both my wife and I grew up in Old Greenwich and attended Greenwich Public Schools from elementary school through high school graduation. We now have three kids in Greenwich Public Schools and one in preschool. I'm here tonight in opposition to changing the Greenwich Town Charter for the Board of Education. Changing the charter, as suggested, would likely lead to an unbalanced politicized Board of Education. The focus of the members of the Board of Education must be on improving educational quality and facilities for all children, not on political party philosophies. The proposed change does not do anything to increase voter choice, competition, or voice for the unaffiliated voter, and in fact, will achieve exactly the opposite. In the last election, we saw a competitive election with two petition candidates winning seats on the board. This is a clear example that the current system is working well. For it to continue to do so, we should focus our efforts on motivating more qualified and involved citizens to run for the Board of Education, regardless of political affiliation. Change to the charter will not increase voter choice or competition, but citizen participation will. As to the goal of voice for the unaffiliated voter, the changes to the charter are likely to lead to unbalanced and single-party control of the board, which will serve to disenfranchise even more Greenwich citizens. I am a registered minor-party voter, and it is clear to me that the charter change will decrease my ability to have a voice on the Board of Education. The state of Connecticut is facing an extreme fiscal crisis. As a result, public schools around the state will continue to face daunting challenges for the foreseeable future. We need a balanced Board of Education which allows for multiple points of view to find our way forward. The proposed change to the charter will not accomplish this, and our children's education would suffer.
Good evening. Thank you very much for convening this public hearing. My name is Peter Von Braun. We've been in, my family has been involved in education in this country since 1636. In that time, we've played multiple roles. I have been on the Board of Education. I also was a member of the Charter Change Commission. Couple of things I'd like to point out. First of all, we're ignoring Albert Einstein's advice, that if you continue to do the same thing as we have for 50 years and expect a different result, that's the definition of idiocy. The goal of education, public education in Greenwich, is to improve academic achievement, to prepare our kids to move out into the world as well-prepared as possible. There has been virtually no change in 50 years of using this model to determine educational policy. Actually, if you measure, and it's very hard to measure academic achievement, because the state keeps changing the basis of doing that. We are now on S-Back, which is a history of about three and a half years. And that's not a timeframe that allows you to draw conclusions about progress. The only basis we have really that goes back to the time that this change was introduced in 1966 are the SATs, the College Board scores. Currently, it were at about 570 as an average for English in Greenwich. It's down slightly from where it was in 1966, but we have increased the budget for education in this town by over 17 times. It was $8.8 million in 1966. It's now close to $150 million. You know, we're spending more, and we're not getting anything near the result improvement that we should be. Part of the reason for that, I believe, is that we, it's very difficult to get a majority behind a substantive change. Now, it has been said that there are almost 300 majority votes that have occurred in the last five, 10 years. Well, we have about 20 meetings of the Board of Education a year. Every one of them has a majority vote adjourned. Otherwise, they'd still be sitting there. The major issue about control is that it's been stated that there are all these Republicans who are ganging up to seize control. Well, the point is, that's not true. The reason that the Republicans have control in this town is because they turn out and vote. Roughly 47% of all registered Republicans turn out in a municipal election, and about 26% of all registered Democrats. You know, if you want to have an influence on what happens as a result of an election, you've got to get out and vote. Thank you very much. I hope you adopt this proposed solution.
Ed? Was it Mendelson? Dr. Finney will be next, followed by Dr. Francis.
Hi. Good evening, and I appreciate the Board of Selectmen holding this hearing. There's quite a turnout. My name is Michael Baumgarten. I have two children in the Greenwich Public Schools. One of the things that makes Greenwich special is the fact that they, we hold ourselves to a higher standard. We hold ourselves to a high level of civility, and we all try to hear all viewpoints and factor the mentor decision-making process. The process now at the Board of Ed works well. With all of the turmoil going on, there have been references to the different superintendents. The Board of Ed continues doing a good job, working through very difficult issues. The issues are only going to become harder in the upcoming years as Connecticut reduces even further the money that we are receiving. To add at this time such a substantial change to the Board of Education is a risky experiment that should not be undertaken. If it is undertaken at any point, it should be undertaken in the future. But at this stage, to do it now, I think would create a distraction to the Board of Ed and its function, could create difficulties in recruiting and retaining superintendents. And given the turnout at this meeting and what I've been seeing around town, I think many people feel very strongly in both ways. I think were this change to be adopted, some of the same feelings which are being expressed this evening, both for and against, will find their way on the Board of Ed. I do not think that will be a productive use of the Board of Ed's time and energy. I also don't think it will advance the welfare of our children. I urge the Board of Selectmen to maintain the status quo. The one other thing I will say, there have been several speakers who have been referring to the fact that our current standard is not democratic. I take very strong exception to that. The proposal will do nothing to affect the situation where certain candidates receive substantial votes and do not end up on the board. It changes it simply by one. So instead of four to four, it would be five to three. In each case, you could argue that that's not democratic. I think that there's a higher level of democracy that we practice here, which is that we want to reflect all viewpoints, give everybody a voice, even if you're in a minority party. Thank you very much for your time. I again urge you to support the status quo.
Thank you. Dr. Finney.
Good evening to all, and thank you for the opportunity to relay my opinion on this matter. The sentiment to eliminate party bias in the Board of Ed election is many years long-standing, and I commend the Selectmen and the committee for having taken on this effort and delivering a viable idea. From the point of view of our children and of engaging the best qualified candidates to serve on the Board of Ed irrespective of party affiliation it delivers. It is logical from the point of view of the voter and of engaging the best qualified candidates irrespective of party affiliation to serve on the Board of Ed, and therefore, it cannot be partisan. Its simplicity underscores the value of its logic. The highest vote-getters, presumably the best candidates in the view of the voter, would serve on the Board of Ed. Our current system fails at this, and the voters know it. This is a solution which people have been seeking for years. It is not partisan. The point which seems to be in greatest contention, the chairmanship clearly logically would go to whichever party gets the most votes, again, underscoring the value of real ideas, qualified candidates, freedom of choice, voter engagement, voter choice, and it could go to any of the parties or either of the parties. It eliminates the bias, and I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Timothy Alexander, then it'll be followed by Randall Smith.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gaethan Francis. I have two children in the Greenwich Public Schools and I'm a current member of the Board of Education. Clearly, hands down, the primary focus of the Board of Education is our students' success, and I think that always needs to be the primary and absolute focus. We are accountable to the voters, but we are not accountable to any particular group primarily, neither parents nor teachers nor administration nor members of branches of the government, nor should we be accountable to any particular party or party platform. I applaud the efforts of the committee. I applaud their work and I appreciate the effort that they put into this. I believe their efforts to look at nonpartisan options was really outstanding, and I was disappointed to see that that was not possible. I concur with an earlier speaker who suggested that one of the things we should have on here is a recommendation for us to try and make a change at the state level to allow that to happen. Some of the other recommendations, equally, I do applaud, which is trying to increase the engagement and involvement of unaffiliated voters. That is a big portion of our town, and I think that they really should be more engaged, and I think our system discourages that. I think that increasing the number of people on the ballot, I think also is a way to improve choice and to improve the ability for others to get involved. And I think, you know, it says also to educate candidates, and I would add to that, educate other members of this community because I think many people are not really aware of the avenues for unaffiliated voters to become involved, the ability to petition on. I think there's very much a sense that if you want to get on the Board of Education, you need to be nominated by one of the political parties, and I think that does a disservice to our Board and to the process. An aspect that I don't agree with is the aspect of creating the option of an unbalanced Board. While I understand and I agree that this supports the democratic philosophy of the person who gets the most votes wins, I think we realize that there are situations, and a recent one, where that doesn't happen. It's not always the person with the most votes who wins, and I think we need to balance that against other aspects. And in this case, I think really the big issue for me is that I think that our discussions, I think the decisions that are made by the Board should be a public eight-person discussion. This is something where all members of the Board should have equal voice and publicly discuss the issues to come to conclusions. There are certainly times when I wish everybody would agree with me on the Board, but I realize that's not going to happen, and I appreciate hearing the other opinions, the other viewpoints. I think it helps us refine where we want to go and come to a better conclusion. And I worry that this system, given the caucus system that now exists along with the way the state organizes us, would encourage a lot of the decisions to be made by those five people who are on the same party, behind closed doors in a caucus session, making decisions that then will not have the ability to have input from all eight members. And I think that that's a threat that outweighs that issue of the democratic vote and the highest voter winning. Thank you.
Karen, are there any more? Okay.
Those are my bones cracking. I'll try to stay close to the mic. My name's Timothy Alexander and I'm a grandparent of a couple of kids at North Street School, and we have found as relatively new members of this community that the school system here is just fantastic. So I want to give, I guess, an agreement with what's been said, which it wasn't clear to me what the set of problems were that led us to believe that now was the time to change the Charter. And I would underscore that when charters are changed, it's likely that the decisions that are made are going to last another 50 years. This isn't something that will be subject to an electoral revision in the next two years. This will be something that we are likely to live with as a community for many, many years. So that underscored my concern and I guess my sense of being careful with voting for process. I understand, I think I understand what led to this effort, and in the abstract, that process looks highly agreeable. But in reality, it's likely to lead to more partisan operation as the supervisors deal with many, many issues. And I wasn't convinced that the 4-4 character of the current Charter had led to the level of problems that would seek this kind of a fundamental change in the Charter. So I'm opposed to that, and I would really like to see this continue to look at nonaffiliated voting to include all of the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Patty Jomo, and then followed by Rich DePrada.
Sorry. Excuse me. Members of the Board of Selectmen, good evening. I commend you for taking up this issue and thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Randall Smith. I live in Riverside. I have two children enrolled in Greenwich Public Schools. I'm a former member of the RTM and a current member of the RTC. According to the State Department of Education, Greenwich spends more per student than any other town in Fairfield County. We spend more per pupil than any school system in New Haven, Middlesex, New London, Hartford, and Tolan Counties as well. There are about 10 school districts in the state that spend more per student than we do, but they have on average just a few hundred kids in their entire system. In other words, among school systems that have more than a few hundred students, nobody spends as much as we do. Clearly, the town is prepared to pay for a first-class school system, and we should. Our school system, together with our low taxes, form the bedrock upon which all of our property values rest. But what are we getting for this investment in our kids? Let's review the most recent S-Back standardized test scores, which every third grader in the state is supposed to take. For the most recent data available, over 16% of third graders at Old Greenwich School tested below grade level in math. At ISD, it was 19% below grade level. 21% at Parkway, 23% at North Mayanus. Almost 25% of North Street third graders are below grade level in math. It gets worse. At Cos Cob and Glenville Schools, roughly one in every three third graders is now below grade level in math. Let that sink in. One in every three third graders below grade level in math. At two of our schools, a majority of students are below grade level in math. In a town that spends more per student than any like it in the state, are these the results we should be proud of? Should we accept these results? Are they simply the best we can do? I don't mention these scores to embarrass the kids or their teachers. We have a tremendous number of hard-working people in our schools, professional and volunteer. When we see classroom performance numbers like these across town, across all of our schools, it is clear that the results aren't an outlier at one or two buildings. It's clear that what we're doing as a district is not working, that there has been a wholesale failure of policy across the district. And blame for failure on the district level belongs at the feet of the Board. And what can we do about that? How can we, as parents, or voters, or taxpayers, hold this Board accountable? We can't. Those decisions are made long before the question ever reaches us in the voting booth. Now, I understand that members of a Board would prefer not to face competition for their seats. We've heard from several Board members that everything is fine on this Board. They say the current arrangement is working well. My friends, one out of three third graders are below grade level in math. Things are most certainly not working well. This ought to be a crisis. I understand that members of town political committees might like the current arrangement. I'm a member of one, and I can tell the members of the public who came here tonight that my own ability, my friend Jeff Raymer's ability, to influence who sits on the Board of Education is greater than yours. It is greater than yours. Does that make you mad? It should. It's wrong. Members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you for taking this issue up. I urge you to allow the voters to determine our Board of Education and thereby return accountability to the Board. It's the right thing to do for the voters, for the taxpayers, and for our kids. Thank you very much.
Just remind people that they could come and sit. If you would like a seat, there's like six seats here, another three here if you're standing and you'd like to sit down. Please feel free to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Patty Jomo. I'm here this evening with Maria Merrill. We are together, the co-presidents of the Greenwich High School PTA. The position of the Greenwich High School PTA is in conformity with the Connecticut Public Policy Statement advocating for nonpartisan Boards of Education in Connecticut. We realize that this would require an action by the state legislature. The Connecticut PTA position is explained in the following statement, which I quote: "Connecticut is one of the few states in the nation that still has partisan Boards of Education. The focus of the members of the Board of Education must be on improving educational quality and facilities for all children. Partisan members who are driven by party positions may not act in the best interest of education for all children in their decision-making process. In a party-weighted Board of Education, members could make their decisions based in a political party caucus. We believe they must be able to think first of the child and not the political party philosophy. Additionally, the listing of candidates for the Board of Education members by the party on the ballot can and sometimes does result in a candidate being elected because of the party affiliation rather than their qualifications." End quote. Altering our current Board of Ed election process to the proposed three-member, five-member rotating election model creates the opportunity for one party to have a simple majority and allows for party politics to be put ahead of education. The four goals that the committee worked to serve, competition, voter choice, voter engagement, and accountability, would in fact be best served by a nonpartisan Board of Education. The Connecticut PTA, the Greenwich PTA Council, and its 15 local PTAs advocate for nonpartisan Boards of Education in Connecticut. At the March 9th Board of Selectmen meeting, First Selectman Peter Tessie questioned whether we shouldn't be taking this matter to the next level and advocate for legislation to be passed at the state level to allow Connecticut municipalities the option of electing nonpartisan Boards of Education. Connecticut is in the minority and is going well against the established national trends on this matter. 85% of the Boards of Ed in the U.S. are nonpartisan. We are the only state in New England that has partisan Boards of Ed. The current suggested Board of Ed Charter change paves the way for decisions on education to be made with some level of party influence. The quality of our public schools is a cornerstone of our residential community. Our school system has a well-deserved reputation, and the proposed Charter change will move us farther away from a nonpartisan Board. We thank you.
Ed Dedak is followed by Izzy Baird.
I'm here tonight to express my support for the Glastonbury Plan. As you listen to everybody this evening and as you deliberate tomorrow, I suggest you consider two things. First, is the Board of Education functioning properly? And secondly, is the election process fair? Now, all Greenwich residents have read in the Greenwich Sentinel and the other papers of the many battles going on within the Board of Education over the past few years. Mr. Smith spoke about the results, but also having superintendent after superintendent after superintendent is demonstrative of the dysfunction of the Board. And that dysfunction was never more evident than this past fall, when the Board tried repeatedly and failed repeatedly to organize itself. They simply couldn't. As you know, you, the Board of Selectmen, was forced to make the decisions that the Board of Education couldn't make for themselves. That confirms that change is necessary. Is the election process fair? Over the past years, many times, there have been more candidates on the pit ballot than spots to fill. But currently, voters can be denied their choice as some of the highest vote-getters don't get seats. Outstanding candidates like Brian Paldunis and incumbent Peter Von Braun in the two most recent elections were denied seats, yet outpulled others who were seated. It's not right to circumvent voter choice. Voter choice is essential to the successful functioning of any democracy. Now, the genius of the Glastonbury Plan is it assures citizens real voter choice, providing that they, not the political parties, decide who will serve. Voters will decide if there should be equal numbers of Republicans and Democrats. Voters will decide if they want to give a majority to the Democrats or maybe perhaps the Republicans. But more importantly, with the Glastonbury Plan, a lively campaign on educational issues facing the entire town is assured, and isn't that the type of democracy we want? Now, I know some, some are fearful, that such a change might bring politics into the school board. Gentlemen, let's be clear. Politics has always been part of the education system and it always will be. Acting or not acting on this proposal is not going to change that. I encourage you to support democracy and voter choice by sending the Glastonbury Plan to the RTM for action. Thank you.
Jason Arabeck is going to be next, followed by Mike Trojan.
Hi. I'm Izzy. I went to Eastern Middle School and Greenwich High, during which time I also served on the First Selectmen's Youth Commission. Thanks to my Greenwich Public Schools education, I'm now attending Mount Holyoke College on a full academic scholarship. So I'm here tonight because I know firsthand that our school system works really well. It's not perfect, and it could be better, but the proposed Charter change doesn't make the difference. In fact, it could bring the dangerous partisanship we've witnessed on the national political scene to our town. We've talked a lot tonight about whether it's democratic or not to adopt the Glastonbury So in my American History classes at Greenwich High, we learned a lot about democracy and about George Washington's farewell address. And in this address, Washington warned of the dangers of factionalism and political parties because they put the well-being of a party above the common good. So there's really more issues about partisanship than it just being voter choice. Partisanship is especially dangerous in situations that affect children, which is why most of the United States mandates nonpartisan Boards of Education. It is imperative that diversity of perspectives shape a decision and that decisions are not made merely on political grounds, but in terms of how they benefit students. I fear that a partisan Board would be a Board that merely rubber-stamps a prevailing political point of view without fully considering the costs and benefits of a proposal. So one of the major goals of this plan was to increase voter choice in the elections of Board of Ed members. However, this plan wouldn't actually do that because the party system remains in place to determine who gets on the ballot. The proposal even admits that it does not make the pathway to election easier for an unaffiliated candidate. True voter choice would instead come from changing the rules for mounting candidates and from actually having more candidates who want to stand for office. Thank you so much.
Izzy, thank you. And I just want to take the moment to say how proud we are of you and your contributions to our Youth Commission. I really... I really am proud to see you here, and as I was Monday night at the RTM. Thank you. Venut, did she left? Did she leave? Okay. Thanks.
I just want to start off by saying that's a pretty hard, that's a pretty hard act to follow. Thank you very much, First Selectman Tessie, Selectman Marzullo, and Selectman Toner, for bringing this hearing tonight, because I think it's a very important issue. To me, though, it comes down to something extremely simple. We talk about voter choice. And when we talk about voter choice, I keep hearing about individuals. What it comes down to is a vote over ideas. And when you have an opportunity for voters to have choice, you're going to have real debate. Mr. Mendelson earlier tonight, I believe, stated that about voter participation. Voter participation is going to be increased when you have a choice, and there's going to be a result from that election. And then, once there is a result from that election, there's going to be accountability. And that's what we need in this town, and that's what we need on our school board, is we need accountability. The very simple thought is we are going to have competing philosophies, and that this Glastonbury proposal, and I stood before you 18 months ago with a different idea around this, and I'm glad to see that it did such a good job by our committee. We are giving voters choice, there can be competing ideas, and I believe that will invigorate the electorate in Greenwich. That will invigorate our school board. It will invigorate our school system. So I encourage you to vote yes on charter change. Thank you.
Bob Brady, followed by, I'm sorry, sorry. You're next, you're next. Sorry. My fault. Bob Brady, and then Peter Scher.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen Committee, members of the public, esteemed members of local government. I am Michael Trony, PTA Council President. I wanted to thank all the dedicated volunteers on their effort. I wanted to also thank the committee for giving time for the public again to voice their opinions on the work and conclusions that this committee has made in a four-to-one vote. In an effort to recognize the importance of your time and to minimize duplicative speeches, I'd like to ask any PTA presidents here and/or the representatives to stand up. We, as PTA leaders and as council, are chartered by the Connecticut PTA and are obligated to hold their resolutions and public policy positions. The Connecticut PTA resolution apropos of this discussion supports nonpartisan boards of education. In discussing this issue with our PTA council and other co-presidents, we came to the conclusion that the policy position on Connecticut PTA's website eloquently and succinctly lays out the reasoning behind this position and does better than we could on short notice. Connecticut PTA encourages the legislation to adopt statewide legislation allowing for municipalities to create nonpartisan boards of education. Connecticut is one of the few states in the nation that still has partisan boards of education. The focus of the members of the board must be on improving the educational quality and facilities for all children. Partisan members may not act in the best interest of education for all children in their decision-making processes. Party-affiliated boards of education have and could continue to make their decisions based in a political party caucus. We believe that they must be able to think first of the child and not of the political party philosophy. Additionally, the listing of candidates for the Board of Education members by party on the ballot can and sometimes does result in a candidate being elected because of their party affiliation. So I would encourage you to consider to pursue a legislative change to the state law. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you. Followed by Peter Scher.
No creaky bones. Good evening, and thank you for holding this hearing on this very important issue. I'm Bob Brady from Riverside. We've been there for 45 years. Our two girls went through Riverside, Eastern, and the high school, and on to Smith College, actually. The, during, I was also 20 years on the RTM, a member of the Education Committee during that time. During that time, I worked with and observed many boards. And without, with very, very, very few exceptions, they were entirely dedicated to student performance and improving that. I share with two of your committee members in being a member of the third-highest vote-getter club but not being seated. It was in 19, I believe, 1993. My conclusion, however, is different from theirs. I support a balanced board. Neither party having a majority. I did this when this issue came before the RTM in 1996 also. Therefore, I ask you to put your committee's report on the shelf and proceed with it no further. Walk away. Leaving it a bipartisan board. Now, why bipartisan? I think first and foremost is that nonpartisan boards are not readily available to us. Would take considerable effort. I believe a bipartisan board does not attract partisan candidates, since there's no real outlet for partisanship on such a board. This is a good thing for a Board of Education, and was so recognized by your committee. There was extensive discussion of the benefits of a nonpartisan board. A bipartisan board requires board members to work collegially, to form coalitions across party lines and one thing or another, to effect policy changes. In this respect, it's in much like the RTM, where on different issues, different coalitions find people opposed to one another on one issue and working with one another on another issue. That serves the community well. I also believe that the bipartisan board fosters individual accountability rather than a more amorphous party accountability. Non- or poorly performing individuals are identified and ultimately not reelected. I think the current system does provide for competition. All of the current board members were elected during competitive elections. Current system also provides a check on the party committees, as has been mentioned. The last two board chairmen were not endorsed for reelection by their respective party committees. Rather, the parties themselves petitioned that those candidates go on the ballot, correcting the errors of the party committees. The current system does not block unaffiliated electors. They may petition onto the ballot, or they may choose to join a party and seek committee endorsement. The current structure avoids the anomaly of a party representing less than 40% of the electorate, having more than 60% of the voting authority on the board, which would happen with the proposal that is before you. In conclusion, I support the existing structure and ask that you take no further action on this issue. Thank you.
Peter Scher, followed by Christina Downey, and followed by Michael Mason. No, it's Peter Scher. Christina?
Yeah.
Why? Did you leave?
I thought I heard someone say.
Peter Scher. Sorry.
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Peter Scher. I have two children in Greenwich Public Schools. I venture to say I'm an expert on the subject of Board of Education running twice through political party nomination process, petitioning onto the ballot, running campaigns, and serving on the BOE. To the best of my knowledge, I'm also the only person who, in a contested election for the leadership of the Board of Education, has crossed party lines behaving in a bipartisan way to elect someone of the other party at my own peril. I ask you to advance the proposal of the Charter Change Commission to reduce the role of politics, specifically political parties, in BOE elections, and guarantee that all voters of Greenwich can choose who governs the town's schools. Greenwich schools teach our children basic principles of American democracy, including one man, one vote, election through majority vote, and vigorous debate of critical issues. We also teach our kids to form a hypothesis, experiment to reveal results, and make good decisions based on data and results. In 1975, this board, the RTM, and the voters of Greenwich changed the method of election to the BOE to eliminate the power of political parties to appoint BOE members and open the election to give voter choice. Let's see how the experiment worked. After initial burst of voter choice, both Republican and Democrat parties retreated to the old pattern of no voter choice. Consider the last 30 years or 15 elections. Republicans, my own party, fared worse, giving voters a choice in only four of 15 elections. A system that, and Democrats meanwhile ran multiple candidates in only six of 15 elections. A system that lets 120 people, largely unknown to the public, appoint the BOE on their whim between 60 to 70% of the time is fundamentally anti-democratic and bad for kids and parents. I'm amazed that most of the people who've spoken on this issue don't get this fundamental idea. You must break the back of politics and political control at Greenwich schools and give all voters a say every two years. I also want you to consider, please don't be swayed by the fake news that's being put out on this issue. There are people talking about nonpartisan boards. Some of those people have talked about nonpartisan boards in the eight years I've been serving on the board, have made little or no effort to change to put nonpartisan boards, which would be better for Greenwich schools if it were possible. Others are saying the board is nonpolitical. That's false, too. Does the board manage to govern the school system despite politics? Absolutely. Are all issues decided in political factions? Absolutely not. Does the party divide on party lines on critical issues like electing officers, retaining superintendents, questions of authority delegated to administrators, and hiring key personnel? Absolutely. If you've ever taken a high school civics class, you learn that control of vital parts of government by small groups of unknown and unaccountable people is not good government. Please do the right thing. Support more democracy, not less. Guarantee voters and taxpayers always have a real and meaningful say about town schools. Make schools accountable to voters, not to party central committees. Thank you.
I'm going to give my time to Susan Jaffrey.
And you were next, followed by Hillary Gunn.
Hi, I'm Susan Jaffrey. I'm a resident of Riverside. On October 3rd of 2013, I wrote a letter supporting Brian Paldunis for the school board that was printed in the Greenwich Times. Me, I'm a Democrat, and I lived here for seven years. I wrote this letter because I was encouraging my Democrat friends to vote for somebody who I felt like would meet in the middle. Having seen his work on improving the math curriculum, I was excited about the prospect of him getting on the school board, and of course disappointed when he did not get enough votes to win one of the two Republican positions, even though he won more votes than each of the Democrats. Much has been made about the fact that the three Republicans had more votes than the Democrats. Here's what I know. I voted for two Democrats and Brian. What I don't know is did any Republicans vote for a moderate Democrat? I don't know. Many of the Republicans that I heard of were encouraged to do bullet voting, voting for just one person, because the competition was so fierce among those three. So comparing the numbers of people who voted for Republicans and Democrats is like comparing apples and oranges. Did I love all the Democratic choices? No. But in case you haven't noticed from presidential politics, elections can be imperfect, and having more choices is not always better. Having better choices is better. Small minority populations can take control if there are too many choices. But clearly, no choice is suboptimal. To that end, I'd like to put my support for the committee's recommendation to encourage that the town committees put three to four people up for each election. Furthermore, I would like to encourage an apprenticeship or a shadowing, an educational process that would encourage more people who might otherwise be intimidated by the school board process. While some people may feel that there's not been enough options, especially on the Democratic side, I would opine that in the current political environment, you will see more people getting involved in the political process. It's also my observation that many of the people running for the school board enter the process with a specific agenda: lowering taxes, building the arts facility, not building the arts facility, special ed, ALP, technology. Most people, I believe, are intimidated by the amount of work involved in the board. The net result is that we have a collection of very passionate, somewhat myopic people. Board members may feel the need to push their agenda and push the administration to get what their specific agenda was, and I suspect that this may be one of the many reasons we have a hard time keeping a superintendent. I would counter that actually restricting the board's day-to-day interevolvement might both limit the control of these small minority interests on both sides, and also help encourage us to get a great superintendent. Lastly, Mr. Tessie, I don't know you, but I have always voted for you. And one of the reasons I have voted for you is because every time I walk into the town hall, whether it was for Lyme disease, wetlands, park passes, curb repairs, everything has gone smoothly and without worry. My husband, who is a Republican, he works really long, hard hours, and as a result, I'm a mom who can't usually come to these kind of events. I count on people like you all to make the right decisions, be like a John McCain, someone who's civic-minded, not being polarizing, and I truly believe that that will make this process much better. So in conclusion, I do not support changing the composition of the board. Thank you.
Hillary, you're next. It's actually Mike Mason first, and then...
So are these done?
These are done, yeah. Mike Mason, followed by, we're trying to go back and forth. Mike Mason, followed by Christine Edwards, then Hillary. Of course, we're going to do back and forth, okay?
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. Hello, Catherine. Welcome, everyone. We've heard a lot tonight about accountability, choice, superintendent turnover, issues. Let me give you a little background. I'm Chair of the Finance Board in Greenwich, which is one of our boards that, we were invented long before 1966. Matter of fact, it goes back to the teens and set up in the 20. And there's a difference in that between the two boards, and I'll explain that. First and foremost is this needs to go to the RTM. There's been a lot of work. The committee's done a lot of work, all the volunteers, your time. This is an RTM decision. That's our form of government, a representative town meeting. But let me just say this. There is a difference. The Board of Education has been my liaison assignment for many years. I'm a customer of the Board of Education. And I will tell you that the one difference between the Board of Estimate Taxation and the Board of Education is, the Board of Estimate Taxation has a tie-breaking vote, which I cast almost 30 times last year. With that tie-breaking vote, it wasn't always along party lines either. What I can tell you, the difference between the two boards, is that besides the difference, there is an accountability. There are items that make it on the agenda of the BET for discussion, even though party lines may be known. I don't see that happening in a Board of Ed. We've seen this time and time again. An orchestra pit at MISA, where there's an outcry to change the ed specs, as an example. We've seen it with superintendent turnover. Was the last superintendent a review issue, or did the superintendent find another job? What was the real conversation? I think the votes were known behind the scenes on that one. Through my time, I will say that the biggest change that I see for the town that's very important here is that policy is politics. I believe we're all residents in the town. I've never really seen the town. I say this story all the time. The town usually gets it right. The town said no to buying Todd's point four times in 1945. That's not a joke. But we sent it to the RTM, it kept getting work done, it kept getting work done. This change is certainly a very important change. It's before the community. There is an outcry. We hear about nonpartisan, we hear about... The RTM does get this item, if you send it to them, for their review and their input on this as well. And I think it's important for the community to have this conversation and use every branch of the government that gets a chance at looking at this. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
I want to know if you missed that. I've got all my electronics here. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to have public comment, and I'm so grateful to see so many people here. And I always remember that we have people who are sitting home who can't be here, watching everything we say, and we have a great participation. I know that I've had to do that a lot, to just watch the TV. Well, I really appreciate, to begin Karen Fassalitis' comment on democracy, as so many people have commented. And they're looking at the fact, so many people get a vote, and yet we're not seeing, quote, "democracy," I'll quote, in its purest sense. But I want to go back to one of the hallmarks of what the United States is about, and that is to be free of the tyranny of the majority. We're going back to constitutional issues. I'm quoting here James Madison, and also John Adams, and Alex Obtobell as well, going back to looking at the fact that when we have a majority participation... back to looking at the fact that when we have a majority participation, then the rights of the minority can be very much affected. And because of this, I am really bringing your attention to keeping the status quo. I don't want to see us become like Texas. We may not see that in our community this could happen, but in Texas and Kansas and other areas, you have Board of Educations who have indeed voted to have intelligent design equal to evolution. And great scientists, people who've been studying this for so long, are tearing their hairs out, saying, how can this be? With a vote of a majority, it can change what the status of an educational ideal could be. So looking at that at the far extreme, because that's not Greenwich, but still understanding what the principle is here, I want to bring us to the fact that to maintain an equality in terms of how we elect and how we participate and how we collegically go forward in decision-making, I think is an extraordinary important thing. I can only ask you to maintain the status quo and not move to the tyranny of the majority. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next will be Rich DePreta after, followed by Bill Finger.
Hello, Hillary Gunn, RTM District 7 co-chair. I'll be brief, but I do feel it is important to speak. To me, this is an issue of voter representation. The idea that a candidate who has more votes than another can lose in a direct vote barring an electoral intermediary flies in the face of American democracy. While the proposed change is not entirely Democratic, it is certainly a step in the proper direction. Both sides have become apathetic, and this change will help to recharge both voters and candidates. We would all love a world in which education was nonpartisan, but one must only briefly glance towards the educational unions to see that is already beyond a lost cause. I've had a number of constituents express that they are very upset. One woman was close to tears because she felt disenfranchised and even manipulated by the way things currently stand. I'm happy today we have a chance to put things right. I urge you to vote in favor of the charter change, as I will when it comes before the RTM. Thank you.
Rich, followed by Bill Finger. If there are any speakers wanting to speak for the proposed charter change, please make yourself known and sign up. We're going to...
I signed, yes.
No, I mean, against what I'm saying is...
I think what Mr. Marzullo is saying, he's trying to balance in hearing both sides.
So after two more speakers, again, we're going to have then...
So what you're saying is there's more people opposed, remaining versus those...
Twenty-something more.
Right.
So, just to let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Rich?
Okay, thank you. I urge the Board of Selectmen to change the election process to the Board of Education. I support the Glastonbury model that follows real choice to the voters of Greenwich and creates a system of accountability to the voters and not just to the political parties, whose nominations in July are all too often a fait accompli. The Charter Revision Committee set out guided by four objectives, and they met all four of these objectives. First is competition. With an open seat up for election every two years, real competition is finally created. Competition is a founding principle of our country. Competition encourages candidates, and later our elected Board of Ed members, to be at their best because there is real competition. Choice, the recommendation of the committee, finally creates this real choice instead of all too often the rubber stamping of the parties' nominations in July. Every two years, the town, and not the parties, can decide if they like the direction of the Board of Education, and they can finally do something about it. What is wrong with empowering the voters? Are we to assume that we know better than them? Let the will of the people speak. What I haven't heard mentioned is some of the past votes within the town. Just this last year, in 2016, the town of Greenwich voted for a Democratic president, a Democratic senator, as well as a Democratic congressman. It is not to be assumed that the Democrats will not win an election if the Republicans will control the vote. That is up to the will of the people, where the unaffiliateds now outnumber the Republicans. There's voter engagement. With voters finally having a choice, there will be true voter engagement. Knowing that their vote counts for something will create a more engaging election process with the voters and with the candidates. Lastly, but certainly not least, accountability. Accountability is often heralded by both Republicans and Democrats alike. How can accountability be bad? Accountability is bad to someone when they're not doing their job. As with all the other elected officials in town, the Board of Education members should be accountable to the voters. Yes, they are accountable to the parties, but the parties are only a small percentage of the town. Under the Glastonbury model, Board of Education members will still be accountable to the parties, but they will now also be accountable to the people. While I support the change to the Board of Ed election process, I do ask the Board of Selectmen to consider a slight revision, as previously addressed by our registrar of voters, Fred DeCaro. The true Glastonbury model allows for the parties to nominate up to the number of seats they can win, which is five or three, and the Charter's Committee, which is a hybrid Glastonbury, allows the parties to nominate up to the total number of seats, which is five or three, as opposed to three or two. This can lead to primaries in November instead of the primaries within the parties in August. The problem with this is that under the Glastonbury model, if a party nominates more than the number of seats they can win, they risk diluting their own vote count of their own candidates and then risk losing the extra seat. Glastonbury created their model for a reason, and they intentionally allow only the parties to only nominate three, or the number of seats, the maximum number of seats they can win. I urge you to follow a true Glastonbury model, and I thank the Board of Selectmen as well as the committee for all of the work and efforts put into this. Thank you.
Bill Finger, then it's going to be... Let's see here. Let's see where... Okay, one second. We have two more, so then we'll just... I'll make an announcement after. It'll be after Bill, I'm sorry. It'll be Ann Whichman, followed by Leslie Moriarty.
Mr. First Selectman and Selectmen, thank you very much for having this hearing. My position is very well-known. I stood before you last week during your regular meeting, so I will try not to repeat myself in some of the things that I... I will not raise again issues that I raised at your regular meeting as to why I think the status quo should be maintained. I am, I believe, based upon what I've heard today, that this is being rushed. There is so much misinformation. I've heard numerous speakers get up there and say the town committees control the number of candidates, control who the candidates are. I've heard people say there's no accountability. I've heard people say, oh, with this model, then you're not going to have a situation where somebody with more votes is not going to get elected. That's not true. One thing we've learned as the committee, that there is unlimited opportunities for people to gain access to the ballot, and even under the political party of their registration. Somebody can choose not to go through the RTC or DTC nominating process, and they could just petition onto the ballot, albeit much more difficult for a Republican, given the fact that you need to have approximately six and a half, seven times more signatures than you need for a Democrat or an unaffiliated candidate. People have talked about the Glastonbury model. This is obviously, the recommendation is a modified Glastonbury model. It occurred to me, subsequent to all the meetings that our committee had, that maybe somebody should reach out and speak to some people in Glastonbury. So I reached out to some of the members of the Board of Education in Glastonbury. I heard back from a few. And the interesting thing that I've heard is, when I told them what we're looking at, they said, why would you change your balanced board? If we had, that person said, if we had your board structure, we would operate better. And the reason why this person said that to me was what I've gone to, what I mentioned last time, unintended consequences. Person who was a minority member of the board for his entire tenure said, there was a time when the board did not function well, decisions were made in caucus, and it depended upon who the leader of the Board of Ed was, who the chairperson was, and what the makeup was. He said, we operate much better now, we would be better if we were balanced, but there was a time when I had no say. So for people to say the Glastonbury model is this ideal model, maybe we should be speaking to the people in Glastonbury who have a different thought. We also talk about, people have talked about keeping the status quo or accepting the recommendation of majority members of the committee. I want to point out that there are other recommendations that the majority of the committee made, which I concurred with. You stand in a unique position. You're elected by the full town voter, all the town voters. You sit up here, you have a platform, you have a standing within your political parties, within your town committees. Be bold. This is being rushed. There needs to be debate. Look at the other recommendations. Encouraging the Republican Town Committee to lower their petition signature requirements. Encouraging the Democratic and Republican Town Committees to recruit and nominate more candidates. Working with the League of Women Voters, the PTA Council, to educate people. Somebody suggested a shadow operation, a shadow situation where somebody can learn how to run for the Board of Ed. That is important. People don't realize that you can be elected to the Board of Ed without going through the parties. So I would say to you, look at the other recommendations, explore these other options, possibly have actual debates instead of having partisan people stand up here, like myself and others, and take a position on one side or the other side. Maybe through League of Women Voters, have a debate where we get four people, two from each side up there, talking about why they think one proposal is better than the status quo. This way, people can learn more. Be bold. You're elected to be bold. This does not need to be rushed to the RTM. Yes, it can go to the RTM at some point, but I believe it's being rushed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Whichman, and I had absolutely no intention of speaking tonight, but I feel as though I must. I was a teacher in the Greenwich School System for 20 years. My children went to the Greenwich School System. I have grandchildren in the Greenwich School System, and I've been on the RTM Education Committee as an alternate and as a regular member, voting member, for the last 10 years. So I feel as though I have a handle on education in this town, and I want to say, first of all, that I will defend this town's education absolutely, because I think that we have a terrific system. I'm looking at it from many sides. I think that our graduates have proven themselves to do very well, and I get very upset, which is why I'm speaking, get very upset when I hear people putting down our education system and basing it all on testing, which I don't think is the only factor that enters into it. So I just want to say I am absolutely opposed to the charter change. I think that we have a balanced board. I think that that would be in jeopardy if we changed the charter. Recently, as member of a committee for the League of Women Voters, we interviewed every member of the Board of Education, and one thing that came out from more than one Board of Ed member was that we discuss and we discuss, and because we are balanced, we ultimately have to reach a decision, and that, I think, is a very important factor. So with that, I'm just going to say, sorry, I'm a little disjointed because I had no plan to speak, but I feel very strongly that we should keep things as they are. Thank you.
Leslie, can you... As people come in, I'm going to try to balance Chris von Keisling, and then we'll go to Leslie. Moriarty?
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for having this hearing. Chris von Keisling. I've been in this town government maybe even longer than Mr. Tessie, although it may be a race, some 40-some-odd years. And I've seen a peculiarity almost invariably happens when one side has either a poor argument or no argument. They either resort to a fustication or delay. Here you have tonight been given three alternatives, in a sense, when there are only two. It's called a false dilemma, with a false answer. The false answer is that we will have an apolitical board. We can have an apolitical Board of Education. Reading, as I'm sure you have on the board, the reports from the committee. Our town attorney has advised that committee that it is very unlikely, if ever, that the state legislature will approve such a special legislation. It possible? Anything's possible, but it's very, very unlikely, and it would take a long time. And in the meantime, delay, and the damage goes on. So what we're left with is very simple, two choices: the status quo or the proposed Glastonbury solution. I was more in favor of the original proposal, but the Glastonbury solution does, in effect, make each one of the candidates for the Board of Ed stand on their own reputation, their own actions, their history, their performance, and their consistency with what they promised in the previous election. So for general purposes, solves the problem of accountability. I would say to you that we can keep the status, the present situation. I never really spent much time looking at the Board of Ed over the years. My wife, that many of you knew, was the educational person, you know, with the PTAs and Board of Ed. But in the last eight years, I've become involved, and I've been able to look, go into the kitchen of the restaurant, so to speak, and sees what goes on in the actual operations. And in the actual operations, it's not what it says in the textbook about how this board works. I know for a fact that there were issues that members of the board wanted to put before the board, and they were denied and on the agenda. They were not even allowed to have it discussed. This is not healthy. If people want diversity, if people want various different ideas, you're certainly getting conformity on this board because there is a tyranny of majority. There is generally eight, excuse me, 80% of the board that thinks one way, and they rule. And that unfortunately does not give us best results. What it gives us is kick the can down the road, and a lot of the problems have been raised up. I think we only have two choices, and I recommend the one suggested by the committee. Thank you.
And then Nick, we're going to, after Leslie, it's going to be Mike Spilo? Spilo? Yeah. And then Nick Edwards, we're just like, good, as we're coming in.
Good evening, Mr. Tessie, Selectman Marzullo, Selectmentoner. I'm Leslie Moriarty. I am a current member of the BET. I'm a former member of the Board of Education and a former member of the RTM, and I'm a town resident for 25 years. I'm opposed to changing the rules on the Board of Ed election. I believe a bipartisan board is the best alternative, given Connecticut law. Party politics should have no place on the Greenwich School Board as it does in the vast majority of school boards across the country. Every board member should feel they have an equal voice in Board of Ed decisions. It currently takes at least one person from the other party to pass a motion, and that forces discussion, collaboration, and transparency. Board of Education meetings are very messy, if you've attended those. The issues are out in public, they're discussed, they're debated for at least two meetings. The meetings last well longer than many other town boards. This dynamic is likely to change if there is a one-party control, which is almost certain if this recommendation is approved. Given Greenwich voting patterns, it's highly unlikely that the outcome would be a 4-4 board. In fact, it's interesting that this recommendation would result in a 5-3 board, which would make it even more challenging for a member of the minority party than a simple one-person majority in, if you had an odd number, Board proposal. This proposal does not improve the voice for unaffiliated voters. This proposal cannot guarantee more candidates than seats. The proposal would actually provide a disincentive for quality candidates from the minority party, since there could be less influence on policy. It certainly depends on the personalities of the elected members. What we really want to encourage is that the best and the brightest candidates run for this important board. As I said, this board is, I think, the most challenging board to sit on. The issues are difficult, they're often emotional, and they have a direct impact on our children and our families. This proposal would actually provide a disincentive for quality candidates from the minority party, since there could be, they could have limited influence on policy. As I said, it depends on the personality of the elected members. This proposal also does not provide any evidence that the change would improve academic achievement, which is a primary objective of our schools. This proposal does not improve ballot access. The current system already does that, and there's no improvement in the current change. I've served on this Board of Education, which is a bipartisan board. I've served on the RTM, which is a nonpartisan board, and the BET, that's now partisan. I can tell you that it absolutely makes a difference in how the board... I can tell you that it absolutely makes a difference in how the board operates when one party has a voting majority. And party politics should have no place in how the schools are run. This is not what we needed for our school system, and I urge you to reject this recommendation and instead maintain the status quo. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Mike?
How many more do we have?
We're good for like, how many more on one side?
Yeah.
10, but we're bouncing. Mike, followed by Nick Edwards.
Hi, my name is Michael Spilo. I'm a member of RTM District 11, and I'm a very data-driven person. And I moved to Greenwich with my family in the 1990s because I did my research. And the research showed me that Greenwich was the number-one school system in the state of Connecticut at the time. By the mid-2000s, this was no longer the case. In fact, after my kids had gone through the elementary schools and then the middle schools, we felt that it, the Greenwich Public School System was no longer the number-one or serving our needs for our kids. And we moved our kids out. My youngest at the time was going to a kindergarten, and my oldest was in middle school, and we moved them to a private school in Darien, a small private school in Darien. At this point, so Greenwich High School, when we moved here, was number-one in the state. By the mid-2000s, it was number-seven based on the same sets of data, and now it's down to about 13. In the same period, the town educational budget has doubled on an inflation-adjusted basis. And I see this as a problem, not as a no problem, not as a status quo that shouldn't be fixed. I see this as a problem of a lack of accountability in the Board of Education. And I think the current situation is broken, and increasing accountability, even if it means one party controls the Board of Education, is a good thing, because that party then becomes accountable and can be voted out at the next election. And there are plenty of unaffiliated voters who will unquestionably vote out, if they can, one of the two parties. So I am in favor of increased accountability and in favor of the proposal before us. Thanks.
After Nick, it'll be Holly Young, followed by Claire Kilgallen.
Thank you very much, Board of Selectmen, for encouraging us to share with you our ideas. I was born and raised here in Greenwich, product of Greenwich schools. My son went to Greenwich High, through the school system. The hallmark of a Greenwich education is opportunity, an opportunity to explore, to grow, to look at different options, you know, as they mature. However, the proposed, proposal of this 3-5 system, which I ask you not to approve, does not foster opportunity. The opportunity is, is that we're disenfranchising almost a third of the electorate in town, the unaffiliated. This proposal, 3-5, if we look at the Glastonbury voting results, shows in Glastonbury that the last five elections have been dominated by the Republicans, right or wrong, but then that doesn't necessarily create a balance. I think in the short run, we need to maintain the balanced board, but as Bill Finger said, is to open up the conversation to consider, are there any other alternatives? For instance, can we just say, no matter who wants to run for the board, you get 100 signatures, everybody, and show, you know, get a constituency, and then try to encourage very good people? I think it's a structural flaw that you have people who get more votes but then don't sit. That's not a function of whether they're better or not. That's a structural problem in the current system. But how do we bring more people into the system that feel excited about it? Right now, it seems to be limited. I know with some respects, this last election, positively, there were alternative people like Mr. Scherer, divided all odds, and he won. But he had a constituency, and people supported him. The balanced board right now, I feel, has been effective, but there can be other models. The 3-5, I think, is going to make the minority members actually have no point of being there. What are they going to say, and who's going to listen? You hope they would be. But I do encourage you not to approve the 3-5 model. The Glastonbury model has some inherent problems and flaws that we need to know how to bring in the unaffiliated voters in town to bring them, make them part of the process. Thank you.
So we have about eight or so speakers remaining. If anybody else, as we transition down here, Mr. Marzullo will call them, but what's been aimed to do is to hear from one side, one from the other, but eventually, that doesn't work. You're going to hear more from one particular, perhaps, point of view. So the next speaker, you said, is Holly Young? I believe Holly is here.
Okay.
Followed by?
Yes, followed by Rosemary Heisen.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, Claire Kilgallen, and then Rosemary. Yep, you're next. Good.
Hi, I'm Holly Young.
Yes, hi, thank you.
I'm a parent of children in the public school system. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to please support the proposed change. I feel as though it's very important to promote voter choice, and anybody who thinks that we have a nonpartisan board is kidding themselves. It's actually a bipartisan board, anyway. This change isn't doing anything to affect that. However, what it is doing is actually making the Board of Ed accountable to the voters instead of to the political party. So it's actually a change that's less political, not more so. And I think that when the Board of Ed is actually held accountable to the voters in every election, where the tax-paying voters can vote in or out, anybody that is acting in a way that agrees or disagrees with anything that they think that is actually in support of our democratic system in a way that our country is supposed to be founded. So I would ask you to please support this and not consider it a political move in a way that changes it. All right, let me start over. Right now, it's already more political. This actually makes it less so, because the voters can do it instead of the RTC and the DTC. So everybody who's saying they want a nonpartisan Board of Ed should step back and look and realize that we don't have that, we're never going to have it, Connecticut State doesn't allow it. It's going to be bipartisan, anyway. So if we allow the voters to choose who can be on the Board of Ed, we're all going to be better off. So please support this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Kilgallen. I'm going to take a different approach. I just wanted to react to some of the things that I have heard, the most important of which is, this is at least a 50-year impact, and I don't think we should be rushing through for a 2017 election, because the reality is, in order for this to be impacted for the 2017 election, the vote has to take place tomorrow, and the RTM has to approve this in the April meeting. So I don't think that a rush to judgment behooves us. Some other thoughts, we're hearing, you know, the last I checked, nobody planned to get rid of the RTC or the DTC. And the fact is that that's the system we have, and this proposal isn't going to change that. Being a relative newcomer to town, 13 years or so, you know, my husband and I, my husband who's never speaking at these meetings, by the way, decried the lack of opportunity because only two candidates were run for two positions in each party. That's where the lack of meaningful choices. So to affect the change that people are buzzing about is at the RTC and DTC level. It's the engagement, it's the public relations, it's the meaningful access, it's the approachability of the RTC and DTC to us. That's how you get people. You know, in terms of the superintendents, I do believe that a nonpartisan board is helpful to keeping superintendents. And I don't think anybody has conducted exit interviews of our past superintendents, but I would bet money that it wasn't, they didn't complain about the board, they complained about the politics of this town at large. And also, I think, the other thing I heard is, we need to educate people in this town on how voting for a Board of Ed member is different than every single position in this town. And so we need public relations on that in a very big way. And I'll jump into the meat of it. I am actually against this, if you didn't guess. I support the nonpartisan, the bipartisan board, given the Connecticut law. The balanced board is a pragmatic solution. And why do people run for the Board of Education? They certainly don't do it for the glory, or the pay, or the thanks they get. They do it because there's a mission, the singular mission of academic achievement of our children, which should not be politicized. What's in the best interest of our children? The measure of education isn't one standardized test. I heard earlier people were unhappy with, you know, some scores. It's not one standardized test. It is the holistic development of the youngest in our society, 180 days a year. That happens day in, day out, no matter who's in charge, no matter who's sitting across from us, who's in the RTC or the DTC. And that's where I think we have to keep politics out and keep the mission true and pure. There are enough political pressures affecting the work of the BOE, i.e. the BET and the BOC, and they need to keep the singular mission of the BOE by remaining bipartisan. And to an earlier example given, how do we teach our children how to work? We work as a team to get things done, to collaborate, to discuss, have that teamwork. This is a model to show our children that we can get things done, not because somebody has a majority, but you have to collaborate and work through things. The impact of a charter change will affect generations of students, and I urge this board and the RTM to keep a balanced board. Thank you.
Thanks. Is Rosemary here? Rosemary Heisen?
Right. Followed by Andy Burke and Marty Mushkin. There she is. Hi.
Hello. So, hello, good evening. I am here tonight to encourage you to not vote for all the recommendations of the Charter Change Committee. I think that they have suggested some things, such as, although I don't believe you can endorse them, you can't affect them, but suggesting that the Republican Town Committee possibly lower the threshold for signatures in order to encourage more candidates to run for Board of Ed positions from that party. There is, there've been a number of speakers illustrating how there really is plenty of opportunity for candidates to get on the ballot, either as a Republican, a Democrat, or an unaffiliated voter. I think it's on all the people here who are critical or unhappy of the way things are going, or who think more needs to be done, to ask themselves, maybe I should get involved, maybe I should find a way to run, because it really isn't that hard. There's ideas about education, starting to talk about the process, not in July, when parties nominate candidates, but now, in December, so people can start thinking about it and thinking, if this is something that they really care about. And you can tell by how packed this room was at 6 o'clock, and the people who came here, because it was so important, they even brought their kids, who probably should be home having dinner, doing homework, and other things. So I think there are a lot of things that can be done in the near term without making this rushing, as Mr. Finger said, this enormous change that will have consequences for decades to come, and it really is not clear whether it will lead to more choice. In Glastonbury, in the elections that I was able to look up, there were only two cases of an unaffiliated voter appearing on the ballot. And in the one that I found results for, they only had a couple of hundred votes. So the idea that this will solve all the concerns of unaffiliated voters and increased choice, it's really not clear that that's going to be the case. So I encourage you to take your time and give this more time, more airing in the public domain, but take seriously some of the other recommendations of the Charter Change Committee that don't involve changing the way the board is elected in a three versus five structure, and see how those pan out, and if that seems to increase the competitiveness of the elections allows more, and voters more choice. And the other thing is, it's also important for members of the Board of Ed and candidates for the Board of Ed to work on that voter engagement piece and get their message out there. That's only through talking to people in this town and telling them what they represent or what they're doing on the Board of Ed, is true accountability really going to happen. It's not going to come from having more names on the ballot. Thank you.
Andy, if I can ask you, just because we're balanced here, so Laura Gunn, is she? Okay. And then Andy. Well, thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Gunn. I want to say I'm very strongly in favor of the charter change, and I would ask all of you to vote the same way. I feel, number one, the process is complicated. I see it's not going to be less complicated, but I think also the voters should be far better informed of what's going on before they're going into the ballots than they are now. So that would be big, and that should be very strong locally, to let people know how this is all done. Because I haven't known in the past, and as a result, though I voted for people I wanted in, I also voted for people, I didn't care if they got in or not, but because I was unclear on the process. But I am very in favor of the charter change. Thank you very much.
Andy, followed by Phil Gunn, and then Marty Mushkin.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Nice to see you here. Thank you, everybody here. I want to thank the Board of Education members. We all know it's heartfelt. There are so many interests and amazing people who participate in this process. And I heartfeltly believe that this-
It's being recorded, you have to-
I heartfeltly believe that a change away from something where ideas are on a platform that can be affected by the intellect of our Board of Education members, who are excellent, how can we enable them to make policy choices for our kids without giving them a good platform to do it? I don't believe this is a good choice, Peter. It just doesn't make sense, because a smaller group of dominant, you know, in terms of the patterns of voting in Greenwich, can control the issues, and then it takes away from the other contributing people who are, in my view, amazing. All are amazing. I mean, all these guys are great. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I don't agree with your basic premise that control by one party in the electorate is going to improve this system. Thank you.
Phil Gunn, and then Marty. Marty, I promise, we're just going to fill in Martin.
How many more do you have?
And then, just like, and then?
Is that it?
No, I'll check, like, five others.
Hi, I'm Phil Gunn, been a resident of Greenwich for about 28 years now, and our kids went to the schools here. And I've always been confused by why the Board of Ed was the way it has been, you know, half and half, as far as the, based on what party you're from, as opposed to virtually every other thing you vote for that's important, that make decisions for whether it's our kids, our schools, our money, our taxes, and everything else. You know, generally, you have a right to pick who you want, and frankly, delimited by the two parties. I guess right now, we're a two-party system, but it kind of rules out that if somebody wants to run and they're not affiliated with either party, I don't know how that fits historically, or whether it doesn't fit. But I personally, I don't see any reason why it's linked to a party, and that, I mean, if a town happens to be 60% or 70% one party or the other, why should the school board be 50-50? That would be, doesn't seem to match up to what the voters would want. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Martin Mushkin. I've lived here since 1972. I have two daughters who went through the Greenwich School System, and a granddaughter who will graduate Greenwich High School this year. I want to first address the premise of the committee report, which I consider to be the unimportant part of what is really being discussed here. The premise was to find a solution to a problem I do not see exists. As far as the election process is concerned in this country, we do not necessarily honor majority votes. If we did, somebody else would be sitting in the White House. So, we can take that for better or for worse, but the fact remains that our system of voting in this country is winnowed through a process. The process is the political parties, and sometimes, and we've seen it in the last 40 years or so, sometimes through a college of electors, for better or for worse. The same thing happens here in Greenwich. Anybody who wants to become involved in politics can do so. As Will Rogers said, "I'm not a member of an organized party, I'm a Democrat." And if you don't believe it, come to the meetings, join the party, and join the other party, which is the meetings of the committee, or come to the meetings of the district leaders. The opportunity to get into politics here and to serve the government, which frankly, on both sides of the coin, is something that people do honorably, and I really mean that, and they may not agree, but that's part of being in a democracy. We have to get along. Now, to the important part of what we're here for, and that is the quality of the Board of Education. When we moved here, my wife, who was a teacher, investigated and went to the schools to see what was going on. And we decided to move to Greenwich, because this was a place where we could live, where we could pay taxes, and in contrast to Manhattan, where we came from, we did not have to not only pay taxes, but also send the kids to a private school. We could have if we wanted to. That was our choice, but that is not what we wanted to do. The quality of education that we have seen here is excellent, and it remains excellent. National polls show that we are in the top several hundred school systems in the country. You don't fix what ain't broke. It's worked very, very well, and I suggest that we leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Actually, I'm speaking on behalf of Karen Hirsch. Thank you.
Okay, next is Lindsey Fahey. Okay, and then Joanne Smollett.
Okay. Hi there, yes. My name is Katie Yu. I am a parent and also co-president at Western Middle School, and tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Karen Hirsch. I am unable to attend this evening's public forum to voice my opinion on the suggested charter change for the makeup of the Board of Ed, due to apparent meeting for rising ninth graders at Western Middle School, but did not want my voice to go unheard. I am submitting this letter to say I do not believe the suggested change to the current structure of our Board of Ed is warranted, nor beneficial to the education of the students of Greenwich. When this request was first made to you, and a committee was formed to look into a possible change to the structure of the Board of Ed, the intent was to increase the size of the board in order to offer voters more of a choice, though there was no significant reasoning that the board's current design was not functioning properly, nor that such a change would provide our students a better educational system here in Greenwich. I am concerned that the committee has questionably overstepped the bounds of the request by recommending an alternate solution that does nothing to further the goals of the Greenwich Public Schools Strategic Plan, nor its vision of the graduate. The committee's recommendation simply suggests a change in the composition of the eight-person school board from a balanced bipartisan board to a partisan board of five to three, which still does not truly allow for much voter choice, as the recommendation does not address an option for including unaffiliated candidates, nor does this change mean the parties will be able to find nor support truly qualified candidates, but simply a candidate who aligns with party affiliation. The recommendation also suggests that this change makes the Board of Ed members more accountable for their decisions, but they are already accountable to the voters and parents in the district, they open their meetings monthly for public comment, and consistently work with and respond to parents and residents' questions and concerns. This change would simply cause board members to be more concerned about accountability to their party than to citizens overall, thus politicizing our children's education. I am equally as concerned by the speed with which you are trying to make such an important decision, and seemingly without due process. Tonight is the first and only opportunity for residents to be able to speak to you publicly about their opinions on this new recommendation. This is the same meeting that we were told was canceled due to weather two days ago, and then subsequently not canceled. Parents have little to no time to speak for or against this recommendation prior to your vote, which I understand will now take place tomorrow. I truly hope that you take the time to listen to the parents and residents who have reached out to you regarding this possible change to the makeup of the board, and have the needs and best interest of our children and their education in mind prior to voting, as we're counting on you to do the right things for our children and their education. Thank you. I'd also like to add that I polled the executive board at Western Middle School, and they are also opposed to this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do need to point out, though, some facts that Ms. Hirsch failed to acknowledge, and that is, that at no time was this meeting canceled. You can check the public record, I have them all here. It was noted that if the building were closed today, we would cancel the meeting, and we would see how the weather developed. But in the two releases specifically on the storm, which I have here and have been on the website, it's been very clear that Greenwich Town Hall reopened for regular business hours at 8:00 AM Wednesday, March 15. The Board of Selectmen's public hearing on the proposed Board of Education charter revision recommendation will be held as scheduled at 6:00 PM Wednesday, March 15, in the Town Hall Meeting Room. The Board will hold a special meeting to vote on the proposal at 3:00 PM, March 16. That was the update yesterday, and the one prior to that on the 13th reiterated that. So, with all due respect to Ms. Hirsch, who cannot be here, it's nice of you to represent her, her facts are incorrect. And two, I have to add this, this is far than rushed. If you look at the record, this subject was before this board that's constituted back in January of 2015. That is when the whole discussion with this generation of people began. And so, I have those minutes as well, I'm happy to share them with you. So, while I understand people are perhaps coming to the subject later, it doesn't reconcile with what the public record is. You know, I just, so you can convey to her, because you're her proxy tonight. But thank you.
Don, are you for or against?
Against.
Okay, you're gonna, okay, then, there's a couple people before you then. So, is Lindsey, Joanne, nearly, in any particular order? And then, followed, then, last on. Once again, if there's anyone else that has not been heard, we have three speakers, four speakers left.
Hi, my name is Lindsey Fahey. I have three children in Greenwich schools. I want to start off by saying that the first selectmen started this meeting by saying that we want to lead locally, and that we have higher ideals than perhaps we've seen at a federal level recently. That is a wonderful sentiment, but what ideally would happen and what actually happens are sometimes different. Right now, people are crossing the aisle to make decisions despite being evenly Democratic and Republican. With a one-sided board, will this happen? Will they be pushed to do so? I don't think so, and this decision will likely last 50 years. This may also introduce more back and forth in our current system if the accountability, which is a wonderful idea, when you think about it, is expected of BOE members. Do we really want each new administration, after they have pushed out the old, to repeal everything the last has done? Aren't we seeing that today, and it's creating extreme partisanship at our national level? Do we really want to have the common core for two years, then replace those administrators and have Singapore math for two, back to the common core for another two? I don't think that this helps us. The diversity of opinion that is provided when you have two Democrats and two Republicans, or any people who disagree with one another generally, generally ends in the best outcome. We all come at this from different backgrounds, experiences, and expertise. To make the best decision, we need different opinions, and we need to push one another to make the best possible outcome for our children. Just as our children are different, we are different. We need to focus on our children, and this proposed charter change is simply a distraction from our mission. I've heard a lot about voter choice tonight. I have to say that it rings false to me, the Republicans here tonight have repeatedly said they are for voter choice, yet vehemently oppose the federal popular vote. We have even been told that no one is trying to get an equal vote nationally, and that this is not Democratic. To believe this thought and go down that path, it only seems logical that these same people would be opposed to the bill and introducing independent voter representatives as well, yet we haven't heard that once. This leads me to believe that what they are actually supporting is partisanship as opposed to an equal vote. The Board of Education is not broken. Do we spend 17 times as much as in 1966, which we heard earlier this evening? Do we have a significant number of third graders not succeeding in math? Have we changed our superintendent? Yes, yes, yes. But those facts are highly misleading. Do they point to problems within our school system? Yes, they absolutely do. We have experienced that firsthand in my family, and I was compelled to sue the town in order to protect my seven-year-old's most basic civil rights. But are those data points reflective of a broken Board of Education that can only be fixed by more partisanship? Would a five-to-three vote have changed any of those things? Absolutely not. One more Republican or one more Democrat does not make third graders do better in math. These data points do not take into effect a great deal, such as a tremendous change in our population since 1966, as well as a massive rise in special needs children, and the IDEA law that is designed to protect them. There has been one notable tie vote on party lines in 450 motions over the past years. That says a lot to me. It's actually incredibly hopeful, as it tells us that politics has not created an impassable stalemate, and that we can still do the best for our children, as it remains. As I'm sure you have realized, I'm opposed to the charter change. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Swamley. Good evening. My name is Joanna Swamley. I did not come here tonight prepared to make remarks. I came to be educated. I listened to everyone, I read the materials, and I am left with the inescapable conclusion that this is a partisan party power grab. How do I know that? I look at the arguments. The argument about voter choice is a straw man. If we really wanted choice, we would make it a lot easier for a variety of candidates to run. I've heard no compelling reason to change. Arguments about the amount of money spent, different scores, miss the point. No one has explained what that has to do with the makeup of the board. What I am hearing is that the failure of this alleged board should be remedied by allowing the Republicans to control that board. That concerns me. If you think that we have a political issue now, we're going to have one heck of a political issue if we turn it over to one party. I recommend everyone in this room read what has been prepared by Mr. Finger, and I would particularly refer you to page four. A benefit cited by the majority in support of their three-to-five recommendation is that by enabling a political party control of the Board of Education, this may, quote, "even encourage each party to develop a local version of their national education platform." Our issues, such as the role of religion in public schools, portability of public funds for school choice, sexual orientation or genderite identification, to name only a few, now going to be an integral part of the Greenwich Board of Education debate. I urge everyone to vote against this. I urge everyone in the room to read this and to contact their RTM member, and to say no to the charter change. Thank you.
Yep, we do. Don.
See the last?
He is, because I don't see, I think she might have left, and I have a question for the Law Department after, but the last speaker is done.
I'll introduce them.
Yeah. Hi, Don, you're at-
Hi, always. I'll keep it brief. Quite honestly, I'm against the change, and I'll tell you the reason why. For many, many years, I've been here since '71. Dr. Fleishman served as superintendent of schools for many years, and the schools worked fine. We've had a problem over the last, I'd say, five, eight years, we keep losing superintendents. And one thing that hasn't been asked tonight is why? And I believe the reason is, between the board and the superintendent, they're not on the same page. Now, we're going out to elect, or rather, hire a new superintendent. I suggest that we take a step back, take a look at who that search firm is looking at, have our board get together and sit and talk with those people, so that they get on the same page. Because if you make a change now, and then somebody's hired in June or July, and he doesn't like what he's gonna find in November, he's gonna quit, and that's not gonna help our kids. And I would say one other thing, and I hope the teachers don't throw anything at me, but quite honestly, I'm a firm believer in change. We have some teachers that have been teaching 25, 30 years. It gets a little old. I think we should take a look at how we select our group of great teachers that we do have to make it better. So, please listen to Bill Finger, and also, by the way, as Peter Scher said, to answer some of the other questions, he wasn't a choice of the Republican Party, but he did get himself on the ballot, he did get himself elected. There are a few others that have done the same thing of late, and now, Peter is even the chair of the board. So, a lot can be done without each party backing each other. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who desires to speak?
I want to first express extreme gratitude and appreciation to all of the residents who participated in tonight's hearing. As we set out with the hearing in terms of the desired tone and tenor, I think this group attained that high standard that Greenwich has. I really am proud of the process of everyone coming out and participating in a very civil and respectful manner, without the indignation and behaviors that we see elsewhere. In terms of process, we have with us tonight representatives from our town's legal department. As you know, this is a prescribed process that has been explained repeatedly. It began in 2015 with the presentation before this board. I think it's important, before we conclude tonight, just to review once again what that process is and how it unfolds. So, first off, the committee did its work, it's made a recommendation. This board can choose to accept that recommendation and advance it to the RTM, or it can choose to do nothing, or it can choose to amend what the board, the committee proposed, and then that goes to the RTM. The RTM meets almost monthly, it meets in April, May, it does not conduct non-budget business in June. A lot of focus was put on the timing of it. I don't want to speak for the RTM, and I want Wayne to explain the timing, but by practice, the RTM typically has not moved on matters of this nature at one meeting. I mean, that's been the, that's been the practice, if anyone's followed some of the issues with regard to leases, ordinances, in some cases, charter changes. So, I cannot speak for the RTM or presume how they will adjudicate it, but I can look at their history and tell you they're very deliberative, and they're not necessarily looking at speeding, in expediting. But Wayne, if you can, or one of the esteemed members of your department, just give sort of the global view on how this unfolds for the people who, many tonight, are new to it. And I think that's one of the other positive outcomes of this, is that we have- at their history and tell you they're very deliberative, and they're not necessarily looking at speeding and expediting. But Wayne, if you can, or one of the esteemed members of your department, just give sort of the global view on how this unfolds for the people who, many tonight, are new to it. And I think that's one of the other positive outcomes of this, is that we have seen tonight many faces, many people who have never been previously engaged in town affairs, and I think that is the overall health of this community, is that we get people involved. So, a good outcome of this process. But if you may, Wayne, thank you.
Wayne, during those remarks, if you can address just the following question, too, that tomorrow's possible vote will be voting on a recommendation or specific language-
Specific language.
Because I have not seen that yet, and we're voting on this tomorrow.
The report has been presented to you.
I have the report.
My office has taken that in consultation with Brian Paladonis. We have put that together, the language that you will be voting on, which incorporates the specific recommendation.
Well, when am I gonna get that?
We'll give it to you this evening.
Okay. All right.
It is exactly as provided in the report. The report was very clear, very extensive, and it is exactly what that committee is recommending to you and what has been discussed this evening.
Because my question is, we're gonna be passing on, we're gonna be passing on something, we're not passing on the report to the RTM, we're gonna be passing on the language in the charter, correct, that we want adopted?
The language that you will have before you deals specifically and completely and accurately with the recommendation of the committee. We are taking the recommendation of the committee and giving it to you in legal form. So, everything that has been discussed this evening, the concepts that have been discussed this evening are included in that language. There's nothing new or nothing different.
Can you address the time, for one, the process? I think, again, taking a step back, I mean, we've sort of explained it as we went into this, but if you could talk about that, how it's derived, and then the timing? I think that was the other question that we've heard. Six months has been alluded to from the date that the RTM, between elections and the date the RTM acts, there's been discussions about this, but I don't think it's clear, certainly not crystal clear to people about the effective date should change to be approved.
You, Peter, have analyzed the process accurately. The concept has been initiated by you, you have assigned a committee to review it, the committee has given you a report. You have the opportunity to take that report and pass it on to the RTM. You have the ability to do nothing, you have the ability to modify it, and you, more importantly, and most importantly, you have the right to pass it on to the RTM. The RTM then has the opportunity to take it and consider it and do with it what they want. If, in fact, they approve what you sent to them, then it becomes final. If they amend it, then there's an obligation under our charter for it to come back to you. In terms of timing, I think what you were alluding to, the committee has acted under two specific sections of the statutes, 9-204B and 9-206A. I think what you were alluding to is that there is a provision in 9-206A which says the charter provision shall not take effect until six months after adoption. So, in terms of timing, if, for example, the RTM were to act on it at its April meeting, then it could become effective for the 2017 election. If, in fact, it delays that and does not take into account, let's say, until its September meeting, then it would not be able to take effect until the 2019 election. That's the timing concern that they have. For it to become effective and active as of 2017, it would have to do so at its April meeting.
So, just simply, if it's changed, then that essentially results in a later, so if it's changed by the RTM, which is by probability, in terms of if they take up anything, there's always changes to it, from what I've seen. So, that would effectuate 2019, because it'd have to come back to this board, and it's not likely gonna be within the prescribed timeframe.
If it doesn't meet that timeframe, it would have an effect of making it effective in the 2019 general election, local election, as opposed to 2017.
And in regards to November's election, are we gonna be, because like I said, I haven't seen, who, come November, who, three people or five people this November, like, who's up?
The suggestion by the committee would be in 2017, there would be three, and then 2019, there would be five.
And how do they arrive at that suggestion? I'm just curious, was there a-
That, I believe, is contained in the report.
Okay, that part I read, but okay. All right, so it's three this year, okay. Does that mean, the two, okay, and then, all right.
What you are voting on, Drew, is the report of the committee. The report of the committee is emboldened in the actual legislation that you'll be voting on tomorrow. There's no changes-
Yeah, but I'm under the impression, though, the Board of Selectmen's gonna be voting on, I mean, it's a recommendation that I think the Board of Selectmen has to send to the RTM.
That is correct.
No, but, specific wording to go into the charter, not a 10-page recommendation.
The recommendation by the committee is emboldened and included in the documentation that you'll be voting on tomorrow. It's not different, it's not changed, it's not modified, it's exactly as they propose it.
So, just to be clear, the wording in terms of tomorrow is gonna say the Board of Selectmen accepts or rejects the recommendation of the committee? Are we actually giving a firm recommendation of what we want to happen?
You will be accepting or rejecting the recommendation of the committee as we have codified for you.
To go into the-
Page 19 of the report is what it is.
Yeah, but we're sending them over a 10, because it's, then I'm sure it's gonna come back, I mean-
I would expect that you would send them all the documentation that has been provided to your board and to the public. That is simply going to be codified for you in a document that encompasses that recommendation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, though, I mean, in the past, in terms of charter change, we would be sending the RTM a specific, Board of Selectmen a specific charter change with wording, not a 10, 12 pages.
That's what he's saying, he's taken this paragraph and put it in the-
We have codified it for you.
Because this is the-
All right, I'm gonna have to see that, though, before, I mean, okay.
Sure, we'll get it.
All right, I mean, all right, because, I guess we'll talk, all right, do we have comments now?
Yeah, well, no, because tomorrow, we had taken public comment. If we begin to debate it, we did not put that on the agenda, so we would be in violation of our freedom of information, because we didn't say we were doing action tonight, or hearing tonight.
Correct.
Again, I just want to thank everyone for their participation, and particularly Kathy, thank you for filling in for Ms. Hines, who is ill this evening, unfortunately could be with us, and thank you, Drew, for your-
Please, thank you.
-handling the timing, and thanks to the committee, again, and all the folks who attended.